Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, both at home and in our studio audience, and welcome to the HCAM 2022 Contested Races Candidates Debates. I'm HCAM News Director Tom Nappi, and I will be the moderator for tonight's debate. This evening, we will hear from candidates in the Select Board race. There are three candidates running for two open seats. The candidates consist of Mary Jo Lefreniere, Shahidul Manan, and John Cottino. Our format for these debates is simple. I will ask each candidate questions, and they will have up to one minute to respond. If you hear the bell, you have 10 seconds remaining. If a candidate has a follow-up response to another candidate's comment, they can state they would like to make an additional comment. I will queue them, and the candidate will have 30 seconds for their response. We ask that you please do not address another candidate directly, and all additional comments go through the moderator. Following the question and answers, each candidate will have up to two minutes for closing statement. So let's get right to it. First question is, what experience and qualifications will you bring to the Select Board if elected? Mary Jo, you could start.
Well, I've been on this board for the past three years. I've been an assessor in the town. I know budgeting. I know the recap sheet and the finances. I -- Tim can tell you I'm always talking to every department. And I think that I bring a town perspective for the seniors and for -- I've been in town over 45 years, so I have a real towny kind of -- I don't like that expression, but I do have that perspective on the town. So I can bring a lot to the board.
Terrific. Shahidul, same question. What experience and qualifications will you bring to the Select Board if elected?
Thank you, Tom, and thank you, HCAM, for this wonderful event. I have been with the town almost eight years on various committees and boards, and that is actually 80% of my town life. And I have spent tens and hundreds of hours working on town budget for seven years, which was critical time because we experienced tremendous growth that time. So I made sure we, with my colleagues, meet with every department, analyze every financial proposition, analyze all the service levels are up during this critical time, and make sure that our school, our police, DPW, all are funded properly with our budget in check, with our taxes in check. And that gave me tremendous insight into towns working. On the professional side, I worked as and still working as strategic executive leadership for some time, having all that, and I can add tremendous value combining it for this town.
Terrific. Thank you. John, same question. What experience and qualifications will you bring to the Select Board if elected?
Thanks, Tom. Thank you, HCAM, for putting this on. Well, as many people know, I did two terms on the Board of Selectment, who then became the Select Board. I did a term and Vice Chair of the Planning Board, 14 years on ZAC, 10 of them being the Chair of ZAC, currently on the Board of Appeals. I've been associated volunteering with the schools since before I even moved here. Mechanical engineer, also a builder here in town, and also work in real estate. But really, the crux of my experience really will come to the being on the Board of Selectment for six years, doing six budgets, understanding how everything works, and knowing the ins and outs of how to get the town moving in the right direction.
Terrific. Thank you. All right, the next question. What are the biggest issues and/or challenges facing the town in the coming year? Shahidul, we'll start with you for this question.
Thank you. That's a great question. So I believe we are in a great state as a town. We have great schools, safest town. But we also have challenges, as you mentioned. We are going through tremendous growth, and it's continuing, even though it tapered down a little bit. But the biggest challenge I see is that with the growth to maintain and improve our service levels, we are going to fall short on our budget in the next couple of years. So we need to solve for that. A big part of our budget comes from our growth money, which is $2.5 million a year, and that's going to taper down as well. So we have to find that money. Our overall budget scenario supports our schools, supports everything we do. So that's one critical aspect that we want to focus on. The other part is we need more collaboration. I believe with diversity growing and with many issues, sometimes we have tension in the town, and we want to work more collaboratively and make sure everyone works together as one town, solving our problems, focusing on future. So those are the key areas I would focus on.
Terrific. John, same question. What are the biggest issues and/or challenges facing the town this coming year?
Yeah, I really think that we have to look at retention. You know, we have to look at what's going on and why we've been losing so many police officers, why we may even be losing our town manager. I think there needs to be a total root cause analysis and figure out what's going on. Because, you know, we can talk about budgets. We can talk about some of the other things that need to get done, the weeds on the lake, fixing the streets, the roads, and everything else. But if we can't keep the well-trained people that we've had for years that have made us who we are, we've worked decades to bring up our schools and make us the number-one safest community and all these great things. And if we start losing all the people that got us here, then we're really in trouble. And that's the stuff I think we have to watch out for. You know, there's all these tasks that might have to get done, but if we don't have the right people in the right places, we won't get it done.
Thank you. Mary Jo, what are the biggest issues and/or challenges facing the town in this coming year?
I agree that retention is definitely one of them. However, I'm not sure that it was the board's fault, which I've been hearing of out there. The pandemic is over, and people are moving around. People are moving up. People are moving around to new jobs. As far as the police go, Franklin has a recruiter. And because we are the safest town, they have a recruiter who has us and South Grove targeted for recruiting officers from our police station. And then some have gone back into retirement. Some have gone back into other jobs and things like that. As far as the town manager goes, I love the town manager, and I was with him yesterday. And we don't really know yet. I don't want to say much about the position because he's now, just now, beginning to interview. And he hasn't given us any resignation or any idea that he might be leaving.
All right. Thank you. If elected, what are your top priorities? John, we'll start with you.
Well, again, I just said it's trying to make sure that we retain our world-class people. But again, it's protect our world-class schools. Make sure that we build an Elmwood School. Again, protect our award-winning police department. Support the chief's initiatives to retain his personnel. You know, maybe work with him to create a training task force. Like this is one of the things that was going on before when people were saying there was no rhetoric to get rid of our police and defund them. But silence is acceptance, and a lot of stuff was happening in this town. And we've got to support our police department. Number one, we should be sending our personnel out there with our standard operating procedures and training our regional police forces to make them as good as we are. And then protecting the taxpayers. We've got to protect our taxpayers. No overrides. You know, we should actually start thinking about doing underwrites. We've already got $400,000 left on this budget. So we've got to start really looking at things and not just taxation for just because.
All right. Thank you. Mary Jo, if elected, what are your top priorities?
Well, one is I want to see the town move forward in every way. We have some smaller items, and they're not so small. I mean, the accidents that have been happening every week, it seems like, by complex problems has to be addressed. We're working with MassDOT. They're studying the problem now, and we're going to do something about it. I feel that all of those things are priorities. They have been priorities. And we've got some rumors out there that I like to put to bed. But we always have supported our police department. If you go back and look at the budgets, they have always been funded, and they still are being funded. And I just think that Hopkinton is a great town. The schools are doing well. And I was really happy when we were challenged with taking $2.5 million out of the budgets, how the schools and the boards and everybody came together, and they said, yes, we will open up our budgets. It's one town, one budget. And I think it's one town, one team.
All right. Thank you. Shahidul, if elected, what are your top priorities?
Thank you. I'll focus on three key areas. The first and foremost, we've been talking about it, managing growth. And that is a complicated equation. We want to keep at our eyes on the ball, our prized asset, the schools. We want to make sure our police, DPW, fire, everyone's funded properly, and we maintain the level of services. And we want to do it with a balanced budget and keeping taxes in check. But we need to do it with proper planning, strategic planning, and making sure it ties together. We definitely don't want overrides or more taxes on our burden, but it's not going to happen magically. We have to make it happen. And we need strategic planning, and we need everyone hands together to cooperate on that. Number two, I want to focus on business. Post-Downtown Corridor, how can we make it more vibrant? How can we attract more business and support post-COVID era business evolution and business growth? And last but not the least, again, focus on collaboration, building and helping with diversity and working as one Hopkinton, one community. Those would be my goals.
All right. Thank you. All right, next question. As a member of the Select Board, you are responsible to consult with the town manager and his staff for issuing a budget policy statement that establishes the general guidelines for the town budget each year. Please describe what you believe should be considered most when making this recommendation. We will start with Mary Jo.
Well, this year's budget, I actually read every single line that came in from every department. And I thought, I still think it's a very good budget. I know it's $104 million. It's a lot of money. And this is, for the first time in a few years, we're bringing back some future articles, and they're going to be on the ballot, ballot questions. And they would be dead exclusion articles, or borrowing articles. But we haven't done that in the town meetings that we had outdoors. We were trying to keep the budget and the town going smoothly, which we did. And we kept level services throughout the pandemic, which is quite a goal. And I think that all the towns, the departments, have been working together, and actually, we're working together pretty well. And I applaud the idea of all of us in one situation working.
All right. Thank you. Shahidul, same question.
Thank you. So I think it's a balanced budget. So that's definitely good news. And I know how much work goes behind with all the committees, appropriations, all the town departments. And everyone does a lot of sacrifice, not only ours, but also negotiation to make it happen. So kudos to that. And it doesn't have a lot of good news. We have a good stabilization fund, $4 million almost on the general fund and about $3 million on the schools. So altogether, over $7 million. So those are all good news. But it also shows some alarms that we need to be aware of and manage for the future. It does make the statement that by 2024, we will start to fall short to keep our service levels with the current growth, the current projection, and everything. We do take $2.5 million of the growth money, which is tapering down this year alone. It went down by 27%, and it'll probably continue that path. So how do we make that up? And we have the ever-source challenge that we have seen, that we have to keep money aside. So those challenges are also looming, and we need to be more thoughtful, more analytical, how we focus on future. But it's a great start, and I give kudos to everyone that we have been able to keep the service levels and within the budget only with 2.09% increase in taxes, which is $2.41 to one. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. John, same question.
Yeah, one thing that Shahidul was talking about, that we have a balanced budget. We have to have a balanced budget. We're not the feds that can not have a balanced budget. So we always have to have a balanced budget. And the first pass, we always have revenue shortfalls. It's just the way it looks. You know, when we do the first run-through. So the way that we do it, we look at last year's budget, and we look at inflation. And then we have meetings with the heads of the departments. Actually, the town manager and his group have meetings with them, and they come through with their initial projections. And then we step back and figure out what we can afford. And I got bit by that when I was chairman several years ago, when we figured out we can only give 2.5% or 3% to the schools. And people were jumping up and down, saying, we need more than that. We can't do it. We can't do it. But then again, we did. And, you know, so when we start talking about balancing it and that we might need going into 2024, 2025, that we're going to be short, even this year, we found extra buckets at the end of the year, and we're putting $400,000 towards the turf fields. So we do have, we can find the money, and we always come up with the budget in the end. And we haven't had to do any overrides in a long time.
Can I respond to that?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, John. And I know the budget process. I happen to have done it for seven years. So one thing I want to allude to is that we have to have a balanced budget, but we also want to have foresight into the future. That's what I want to focus on. And clearly, our finance committee has made that comment, if you read it, on the executive summary about this challenge that's looming. So that's what I was referring to. And the other thing also about budget that we keep saying, but we haven't seen much improvement, in fact, which is most of our budget revenue comes from residential taxes, as you know. So we definitely want to diversify it further and make sure that we get more from commercial and industrial. Right now, those two combined comes about 11%, and only another 6% from business property. So that's not a good, healthy budget distribution. And we have been very lucky that we have always had that money stream to make it up. Just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
May I respond to that one? You know, two years ago, when we did the budget, this year, we were supposed to have a shortfall. And if you look, we only taxed up to 2.1%. That was very good, that we're able to 2.1%. And we have to take into fact that the budgets do work out, that we do have other sources of revenue. When you're talking about that the businesses are down to 11%, three years ago, we were up at 13%. We were at 15% before that. With Dell moving out and everything else, that is going to be tougher. But we've been trying to attract businesses for a long time. But that means working with the Planning Board and zoning and such to change the zoning so that the businesses can come in. That's one of the reasons why I think I do a good job because I did five years on the Planning Board and 14 years doing the zoning, so trying to attract these businesses like him that's on the warrant this year.
All right. Thank you.
Do I get to respond?
Yep, you can respond.
Yeah, just to point that out. I think we are saying a lot of same things. And just to note on that, I always promote, you know, how we can get more business and support business. That's the point. And I'm with Planning Board now, as you know. And that's where we are focused on, working with zoning committee and others. But I think a little bit emphasis from my end is that we cannot say it will automatically, you know, get balanced. We need to think about it. When our financial experts point out certain things, we need to look at it and say, okay, why is this happening? And how can we make it better the next time? That's all I'm saying.
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that the budget was a difficult one. It was a difficult one this year, sometimes because of the pandemic. But I absolutely, as an assessor, support the TIF program, which is now in the article, one of the articles for Town Meeting. And it's a good TIF. And I think that we are going to make a lot of money from that, like in the future. So, and if we have a few programs like that, we are going to attract more business to South Street and to the town.
Okay. Ready to move on to the next question? All right. Do you participate in community events? And do you feel it is important for a member of the Select Board to partake in community events? Shahidul, we'll start with you.
I love it, and I think it's very important. It gives me the sense of, you know, what's happening in our community, get the feedback and connect with people, connect with our residents, understand the issues closer, and most of all, enjoy all these, right? So I definitely make it a point to go to all the events with my family. And we all enjoy it with HCA, with our various baseball parade or horrible spirit, which didn't happen because of COVID. But we enjoy it when we can. And as well as all the other activities and social holy. It was a fun one recently. We played with color with the entire town. So, and I think we are getting better and better with our events. And sometimes, you know, people from other towns are surprised how busy we are and how much engaged our residents are with each other, all these. And I think that helps build a community, helps raising our children with great exposure. And as town leaders, helps us get the pulse of the town and help us set the tone and the direction.
Thank you. John, same question.
Yeah, that's actually been the crux of my whole campaign, is that for years, that's the one thing that most of the townspeople said about me. John is everywhere. And because what's important is we want to be able to, on the board, bring the taxpayer to the board and bring the board to the taxpayer. And it's important to find out what they're thinking. Going to all of these events, you get firsthand of what's going on. You get at baseball games or parades or even funerals and weddings, you get to really talk to people and find out what's eating at them, what's worrying them. You know, getting ideas of where we should start looking to fix things and to take initiatives, what parts of the budget are working, what aren't, where should we make some cuts, where is it possible to make cuts? So where is it? People say, please don't ever cut this stuff. So being out there is very important. And it also shows the towns, town workers, that we care about them.
Thank you. Mary Jo, same question.
Oh, I absolutely think that we should be at events. And I have been at almost all of them this year. And I was at Holly, where I got colored because, yeah, they wouldn't let me have white hair. And it was fun. I've been to the Nazneen events, and I volunteered at the senior center from time to time. And that has really brought me in touch with that group of people. I have helped out the Florida Health and their VAX program on occasion at the senior center. I think it was very good. Our Florida Health did a wonderful job in that. And I've been to -- I can't even list the number of events that I've been to on the Common, down at Western Nursery's Marathon. Having been on the Marathon Committee, I went into the BAA wreath event at the embassy, at the Greek Embassy. So I just, I do believe that it's a good way. And I am retired, so I have the time to go out. I'm running up to the town hall all the time, and I volunteer for the town clerk's office. So I have my finger on it.
Thank you. John, go ahead.
For me, the other thing that's real important is being on other boards and committees. You know, I'm on the Lake Maspinock. I'm one of the directors of Lake Maspinock. I also work at St. John's Church. And these are places where you can get very specific about things that really need to get fixed. On Lake Maspinock Committee, I was very surprised that not a single member of the Select Board went to the CONCON meeting for seven years. The Select Board seated a week committee seven years ago, and the big vote was coming up on CONCON. And not a single, it was Zoom, so people could have just gotten in. But it was real important to have the input and to put the impetus on that we needed to get this done. It did get done recently, this week, but I was really surprised that people didn't come out and have any impact.
All right. Moving on to the next question. Though not definite at all, we have heard the possibility of town manager Norman Kamalu leaving his position for a job elsewhere. What do you think would be the most important qualities to look for in finding a new town manager should Mr. Kamalu leave his position? John, we'll start with you.
Well, I know Norman very well. I managed with him for six years when I was on the Board of Selectment. And there are a ton of qualities that he has that are just going to take a long time for someone else to acquire. The tribal knowledge that he has about how this town works is just, it's tough whether or not we can find somebody that has the qualities to be able to do the budgets, to be able to take the heat of when townspeople are upset, they immediately go to the town manager and blame him when sometimes it's the Select Board that made the rules and told the town manager what to do. You know, so we're going to need somebody that knows budgets. We're going to know somebody that's good with politics, that can deflect stuff, that can delegate. We need a good manager. We need somebody that understands how this town works and how basic municipal finance and management works.
Thank you. Mary Jo, same question.
Well, Norman and I have gotten kind of close, and I really like him. And we have a lot of laughs together, too, as well as working very hard and very diligently. But out of respect to Norman, he hasn't left yet. And I mean, we have to look down the road in case something like that happens. But we didn't know that he was even looking until he called us the night before it came out in the newspaper a couple of days ago. So it's still a surprise and it's still a shock to the board. And we haven't even had a meeting yet. And we will be working with personnel and with all of the department heads and everyone in town to decide what we need in a town manager moving forward. And I think Norman is going to be huge shoes to fill, huge.
Okay. And I do want to emphasize, this is certainly a hypothetical question at this point. Shahidul, same question.
Sure. Yeah, it is hypothetical, and I believe that Norman has been an excellent manager and extraordinary asset for this town. And I wish him all the best should he choose this to leave. But, and definitely, I've worked with him seven years very closely in the appropriations. We went hours and hours on budget and others. And I was really amazed with the depth of knowledge and the insights he brings. Having said that, we, you know, incorporate, as well as in public, always should be prepared for succession plan. And having said that, we want to come up with the criteria that you mentioned. It needs to be focused on someone who can have that operational excellence, understanding of the municipal finance and municipal works and relationships with various stakeholders, and who has that people personality, who can listen to the residents, listen to various boards, and help collaborate across. I think both of these skills are super important. And last but not the least, someone who's also strategic can look forward and tie them all together to make our town better. But obviously, it's hypothetical, and we wish all the best, Norman, however he chooses.
John, you have a response.
I think before we even start thinking about about what we're going to look for in another one, we really have to figure out, why is that town manager leaving? You know, it's, it's,
Well, that's if.
It comes down to management number 101. The reason why people leave jobs is because of their management. The number two reason people leave jobs is for money. So before we can attract somebody else, we have to find out why we didn't retain our present town manager. Did we not challenge him enough? You know, Norman's great when it comes to challenges. Norman did a great job with the downtown revitalization project. He did our library, the DPW facility and everything. So before we have to think about what we're going to look for in somebody else, it's why are we losing this great person that's going to, that may be going to another place? That's the question. It's, that's much more important than trying to find somebody, because who might want to work here if it's not going to be challenging?
Okay.
We have, I think we have to accept that people want to change at a point, and they want to move on. And the idea of managing a city is very appealing to Norman. So, you know, people have their own, sometimes their own private reasons for leaving.
Well, certainly nothing's definite yet. Shahidul, did you have a response?
Just to add to that, I think these are all great points, but maybe we are jumping the gun a little bit. One thing we want to do is look at due process. And I'm very data-driven. I don't have enough data to make any such assumptions. But one thing I do know that we have a personal committee, and we do exit interviews or in situation like this, assess what are the things that we might do to retain talents. I agree with that. We definitely want to look at that across the board. But I don't know if, you know, a great town manager leaving after 13 years, without any specific data or specific information from Norman, I would jump into any conclusion. That's just my view.
One more small point.
John.
You know, could it be that he sees that there's no vision? Over the last two years, is it a point of stagnancy? When, to Mary Jo's point, he may want to go to a city because there's more, there's more things to do. But we have challenges here. We have a lot of challenges here. We have, we have the schools. You know, the overcrowding in our schools, that's looming. We have our roads, we have our lakes that need to be fixed and other projects. In the last two years, it's just been stagnant. So there's no vision, there's nothing that's coming out that he says, oh, I want to stay to get this done and get this fixed.
All right, I think we're getting away from the question a little bit.
Yeah, I have to disagree. Have you talked to Norman?
Yeah, I did.
And we did fight a pandemic. And when you say there's nothing been done, there's been lots of things done.
Please address through the moderator.
Under difficult circumstances. And that's all I'm going to say.
If I may, the moderator, there's activity versus impact. A lot of activity, but what was the impact? And that's what I think is maybe driving Norman out.
All right, well, that's if. He hasn't left yet, so it's a hypothetical.
Thank you, you're right.
What would you look for in a new town manager?
I hope we don't lose him.
I think all three, you had a chance to answer the question. So we'll move on to the next one.
Yes, we beat that one up.
All right. According to the town charter, the select board is the town's chief executive office and serves as the chief policymaking board of the town. Please describe how the board should function within this framework and what you see as the board's responsibilities as compared to the town manager. Mary Jo, we'll start with you.
Well, this isn't a mayor. We don't have a mayor. So it's not exactly like that. We set policy. We set, you know, alcohol license policies. We set all of the policies on common victual licenses. We license every, every single person in town that needs it. And they all come to us and they send us vodles of information in which we read. And we also, our job is more to guide than it is. We're not bosses. We're not there to tell the boards what to do. We put people on boards. We put people in places. And we expect them to do their job and come back to us. And, but we aren't, we aren't police and we aren't, I mean, in the way of policing the town. But we are, we do keep an eye on all of our boards and departments that we nominate and put people on all the time. And we're open for discussion if anybody wants to come and talk to us. And, you know,
All right.
That's our job.
Thank you. Shahidul, same question.
Thank you. I believe the key role of the select board is threefold, and then there's more, of course. So first, to make sure that we provide the right oversight on all town activities. And then making sure we have the right policy that will guide them and the right guidance. And also making sure we provide the right support and get the feedback from the town, listen to all parties, and help collaborate each other. And what all of those leads to is that it is the leadership. It is the leadership body, top leadership body of the town. And that means it's all those things that I mentioned, but showing those with the right empathy, with the right strategic insights, and connecting the dots and help guide all these boards and activities that goes on. And sometimes, for good reasons, all of the boards, talented people are focused on one thing or specific things. But it's the town leadership role which will connect them all together and make sure we are marching along on a strategic path. So that's what I think is very critical for the leadership.
Thank you. John.
Well, the way I see it is setting a vision and a direction and guidance. The board's supposed to, just like the board of directors at a company, we're supposed to be the inspiration behind all of this. You know, and what it really comes right down to is protecting our schools, protecting our public safety, and protecting the taxpayers. And to make sure that the right things are in place so that we can have the level services or better and not overburden the taxpayers. But, and to give the professionals that are working within town hall and the surrounding buildings the proper, as I said, proper vision and guidance so that they can do the right thing. It's just really that simple.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're moving on to the final question, believe it or not. Is there any particular article at the upcoming annual town meeting or town election ballot question that you feel strongly about? And if so, what article, question, or topic, and why? And please pick just one article, ballot question, or topic, please. Shahidul, start with you.
Well, thank you. There are tons of stuff. And in terms of articles and all these wonderful propositions, one thing I have noticed, and being from the budget side, I think we always don't pay enough time on the big picture and related budget items. So all the articles related to budget, actually tying them together, is my big focus. And there are certain issues which are because of the sensitivity or because of particular interest or debate, becomes a lot of, you know, or becomes the point of focus. Rightfully so, that's also very important. But generally, I always worry that those should not distract us from our bigger budget items, especially for our school, for our various services with police, fire, DPW, making sure all the fundings and all the support that they need for service levels and keeping our quality of lives are in check, and our taxes and all those ties together for now and for future. So that's where I would focus most.
Okay. John.
For me, it's the TIF. For me, it's the TIF because what it's going to do is it sets a tone. You know, we gave a TIF a few years ago, and the company totally exceeded it. And they've done everything it asks of them and more. And if we can continue and get them another TIF, it'll show other companies, like Shahidul's point a few minutes ago, to attract new businesses. That's the way to attract new businesses, where they, these companies know that we're going to work with them. And again, that also means what we talked about before, working on the planning board and zoning to make sure that we change our zoning and modify it so that we can attract these businesses. So if they see that we're giving out reasonable TIFs, and if these companies live up to those TIFs, then we can really continue to fill up South Street and then bring that 11% to 12, 13, 14% or even more to try and be more like some of our surrounding towns that do much more in business.
Thank you. Mary Jo.
Well, I've already said, as an assessor, I've administered TIFs and spent time on them. And I totally support the TIF. But then I also support the schools. We really have to keep up our schools. And we're having problems with special ed. Special ed, we're having more children. Some years, less children, other years. And it's very expensive. So I support making up a stabilization fund for special ed in the schools that we can use in the future. Should we have more children, we can take some money out of the stabilization fund. And I think that that's the way to go to help with the special ed because it's so important to our children and to the schools.
Thank you. All right, it is now time for closing statements. You'll each get two minutes to make a closing statement. John, we will start with you.
Oh, great, thank you. Once again, I'd like to thank HCAM and Tom. Thank you for hosting this event. You always do a great job with this. Too bad the candidates from the other races couldn't join us because this event, along with others, really does help promote voter awareness and knowledge of the issues that face our town and how the candidates will address them. Because, as I said before, knowledge is power. I'm running to refocus the select board on the issues that matter most to residents of Hopkinton. Excellent schools, excellent public safety, and excellent services. I'm running to bring real management and true accountability to the board with a focus on employee retention. The board must do some soul search as to why we've lost so, so many police officers and commit to respecting, supporting, and funding the police chief and his efforts to train and retain his fellow officers. I'm running to refocus the select board to propose and begin projects that will really enhance the lives of everyone in Hopkinton and can challenge our hard-working town manager. I'm also running to be sure that your tax dollars are spent wisely on projects and services that move our community forward together. The board desperately needs diversity of thought and dissenting opinions. The board needs to have a voice that speaks and advocates for the other half of town. I'm running to bring a balance, a different perspective, and my strong local government experience to the board. Hopkinton deserves at least one full-time select board member, and I want to be it. I would really appreciate your vote on Monday, May 16th. Monday, as Shahidul said before. Monday, May 16th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mary Jo, a friend of yours?
Well, I've been on the board now. And I find that there's a lot of differences of opinion. Nobody's rubber stamping anything. And because of that, we have lively discussions and we come to a consensus. Every single board member has the town in their heart and wants to move the town forward. We've had a difficult couple of years. And now we're just coming out of it and we really are beginning to move forward. And we are looking at those issues that, and others, like the PFAS and the, joining the MWRA. And there's a lot on our plate, and it has been on our plate. And we have been working diligently to come up with some answers, and we will continue to do that. However, we were hampered with the pandemic, as was everybody. And John wants to be a full-time selectman. Well, I'm retired and I'm at the town hall all the time volunteering in the town clerk's office and many other offices. And I kind of think I am a full-time selectman, a select person or on the board, select board. And there's just, there's so many, so many things.